And if we damage something, we need to fix it.
We'll pick it up and solve it.
And I think also in talking to Pete Lorraine, we did Pete Lorraine and Mr. Malloy, we all sat down and we had a conversation. And Lorraine's got her little map there. And she is gonna go walk with Mr. Malloy today, right? We're gonna go walk the ... No, I'm not, I'm sorry, but Ms. Lorraine is. She's gonna go walk the property with you to look at trees, to look at what you don't want damaged.
I don't want anything damaged.
I know, and I understand that. That's not what I'm saying. I'm not trying to ... I mean, we wanna try to work with you and try to fix any damage that we've done. And if we did something, we're sorry.
Well, to me, it was, on the day that that occurred, after talking, going back there and talked to him, it was ... I don't think you can understand, maybe you can, the slap in the face after I was told nothing would be done near my property. And I figured after we had the discussion, somebody would walk up and, after saying, making the statement they weren't gonna hurt your property, would walk up and at least look to see where my property was. That wasn't even ... Obviously, it didn't occur. Because they just took out forty feet of fence on the corner of my property, just drove right through it with a bulldozer. They took out one tree that was about four inches in diameter, and then there was two smaller trees and some shrubs. Okay? And then they also ... I had a cat carrier, small carrier thing. That's ... I don't know where that went to. I was ninety-nine percent sure it was sitting right in the corner of the property where they took out the fence.
Mr. Malloy, is your property the edge of the fence?
Excuse me?
Okay, the back of your property, does it go past that fence?
My property ...
Is the fence?
The fence was within the fence line. The fence line, basically, if you look at the survey, the original survey, it says, "My property line is the fence line."
Okay, that's what it says.
If you come within twelve inches of that fence line, you cannot ... There's no way of avoiding damaging things that are within my property. And I get the impression from the people that are working around here that they have the right to clear everything right to the fence line, irregardless of how much damage it does to my property, or anything on my property.
I did ask Jeff to come talk to you all. Did y'all have the chance to visit?
No. The only time I ever visited was the next day after this occurred, and you had told them to come and fix what they had done. And they'd had seven people spend from eight o'clock in the morning until twelve-thirty putting my fence back up. Boy, that was expensive, I bet. Somebody should have to answer to that waste of funds. And I think, a few minutes ago, I heard that these people aren't supposed to be used on anything but road and bridge. I thought I heard. Because they were the road and bridge crew.
We agreed with you on that.
Okay. Now, let me tell you this. Everybody else in that road and bridge crew were the nicest people I ever met my whole life. Okay? The only person that ... It was almost like he comes across as if I can do whatever I want.
Na 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 na.
Yeah, come on! So. That gentleman needs to either have a reality check done, or you need to find somebody else to do his job. Because he doesn't care about the public. All he cares about is doing his job. And his job is significant impact on public, on people's property, all the time. Now, maybe he's far enough away, ninety-nine percent of the time, that he can't do anything to hurt people. But he didn't give a damn that he worked over by me.
I apologize for that.
So, my question is, you know, I'd like this group to put in writing how they're gonna impact my property and what my ... I guess Lorraine and I are gonna look at that right now.
Well, I don't ...
But I think that needs to be eventually put in writing. So, I have some degree of comfort is to, you know, they're gonna put a jail behind my house.
Can I ask you this?
Uh-huh.
After Lorraine and y'all are able to walk the property, can you come back and tell us? Can y'all come back and talk to us?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'd like to be more involved in it. I wanted to be more involved in it.
And I told you, you're more than welcome to come.
But in May, I almost died because I got bit by a tick or flea that bit a possum and gave me marine typhus. And I spent the last six months learning how to walk again after having the same exact kind of thing, this frostbite on my feet, and my toes turned black and almost died.
But we're glad you're here.
But I'm better at it.
Can we do something after you meet? Is it a possibility?
Oh, yeah.
I would love to sit down.
I mean, this thing is gonna be behind my home. I have no choice, I understand.
Will you and Lorraine come back after you're done? And let's sit down and let's come up with some ideas that we can put in writing. And if you wanna recognize past good work, or if you want Mr. Hancock, would you review them for us?
I just wanna make sure that, you know, so many times you hear about, there's an agreement, a verbal agreement between parties. And if it isn't written down, somebody's gonna come in and just ignore it. Well, it's not written down, I can do whatever I want, right up to that property line. That's all. I'm all right with that.
Well, we wanna work with you and we wanna involve ...
Because, I mean, right now, if everything was just left the way it was, if you built that building back there, because of the shrubbery that's there right now, I would still have some monica or some degree of privacy. Because, I mean, I can't even hardly see the post office from my house standing in my backyard, because I have a nice thing of shrubbery right there. But, you know, if it's all torn down, I won't have anything. Except cars driving by. Because the proposal that I saw so far shows that the driveway's gonna be five feet away from my fence line. Or maybe eight feet. I think it is. Okay. Well, we'll come back.
After you and Lorraine take a walk, if you'll come back, we can review. Is that possible, Lorraine?
Yes.
And if maybe, I mean, if we can put it back on the agenda for what we're gonna recognize, would y'all be okay with me doing something like that? I can have Mr. Hancock review it? Would you do that for us?
Me? At a future meeting?
I hate to bother everybody, but ...
Is what you're saying?
But?
At a future meeting?
Right, yes, sir.
It's hard to resolve today.
Yeah, this, yeah.
But today, we can sit down. You can write your thoughts, thoughts, you know, and we can come up with an agreement that we can all live with to be the best neighbor we can to you. Knowing, I understand, but it's a jail. But we wanna be the best neighbor we can to you. And I apologize if we did anything to you. I called you back a couple times, seven-thirty, eight o'clock at night, trying to watch you and I'm so sorry it happened.
I just wanted, I wanted to express my concerns, and I wanted this group to know the way Mr. Reactor treated me. Okay? So that you could have it on record. And if the guy has a record of treating people this way, that the appropriate action can be taken. That's all. That was my meeting. And what was going on? Okay. Thank you. My apologies, sir. We'll thank you for that anyway.
Judge Shaw, can we move the agenda a little bit to move to Jess Williams'?
I'm sorry, Vi.
That's okay, that's okay.
Come on up, Vi. Tell me what number we are.
Thirty-two or thirty-three, I think.
Okay.
Just do his, and we're gonna go back. Do you want ...
Thirty-four.
You know what? I know the thirty-four. For some reason, half of my line is gone. It says, "Presentation made by Jess Williams concerning vitality results and quarterly report on interim claims and member participation."
Is that what it says?
Yes.
Okay.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioner.
How are you, Jess?
Friday. How are you? I'm good.
Do you mind handing those up?
Yeah. We've got a snapshot of where we are with our health plan.
What do I do, Carol, when there's competition?
I'm sorry. Yeah. That's for sure. There you go. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
There you go. I wanna give kudos to Vi and Julie on assisting us with our biometric screenings and flu shots. We had forty-one employees participate, so it was a very good turnout. And we appreciate their help so much. Couple of things that we've accomplished that wanted to make you aware of. We, initially, we did not have the retirees covered in the contract. It wasn't in the RFP, but it was in the personnel file. So, we got that added at no additional cost, and that's a real big thing to add, because normally, that will adjust the premiums, and we're able to get that done. So, thanks for Vi and Julie on that as well. Wanted to tell you, we're currently working through Humana on an automatic data feed regarding tasks on reimbursement for people that meet over five hundred dollars, that need to be reimbursed. And that's gonna help out things a lot, eliminating paperwork and speeding up their reimbursement. This has never been done before through Humana, so we got the Vice President involved. And Vi, thank you for helping us with that. So, that's in the works and should be completed within the next two weeks. Wanted to kinda give you all an update on your claims and this report that I handed out here. If we could just go, and I'm gonna hit the highlights really quick. The first page, you will, that says benefit utilization. And just wanted to touch base on something that kinda jumps at me. What this does, though, it talks about this group, the county, and then similar groups of this size within all of Humana. And it gives the differences. Really, there's some percentages there that are common to most groups. But I will point out prescriptions is up like sixty percent over the norm, and also inpatient admissions. So, one thing we'd like to do with the help of Christie, who's y'all's account manager who's here with me today, is as we try to accomplish the discounts, which I'm gonna talk about, we also talk about prescriptions. Humana has a RightSource, which you can, a lot of the employees, I don't think, are aware that they can get half a copay discount if they use the RightSource, and that would be helpful in reducing the cost with the prescriptions.
Is that in a certain pharmacy, Jess?
No, it's older. But it's actually a procedure that we need to go through, and maybe we could help educate them to start utilizing that, so that can, you know, impact the claims and help out with the group and the renewal. The next page of this report kinda goes through, and I'm just gonna breeze through this real quickly, the deductible report. What I think's interesting there is, you know, generally eighty percent of your claims are spent on ten percent or less of your people. And this kinda shows you that, that actually, of the thousand-dollar deductible, seven-point three percent of your population has actually met their deductible. So, that kinda goes through your deductible report. The next page is the out-of-pocket report. It kinda shows people, you have a three-thousand annual out-of-pocket after your deductible. That kinda gives you some references to people that have actually met their out-of-pocket. So, for the most part, members stay or don't even meet their deductible. But it's there when you need it. The next page is the wellness report, and this is where I wanna spend a little bit of time. We have thirty-six percent of the people registered on humana.com. We would like to increase that, because we have sixty-four percent that are not registered. And we're gonna talk about trying to have some efforts to get people engaged. And the last part, I've kinda touched about already on maximizing your prescription benefits. We need to help maybe suggest alternates to help reduce not only their cost, but also help out with regard to claims in the future. But really, where I came in to talk about was vitality. This program, I think y'all remember, that we talked about, has the opportunity for us to gain discounts before our renewal, if we get engaged. And not only is it a good thing from a standpoint of money, it's a good thing to get people involved in becoming healthier, healthier employees. And Vi's done a fantastic job, and she was explaining to me a little bit about Zuma, Zumba? Is it Zumba? Excuse me. And what are y'all doing with the diet?
Weight watchers.
Weight watchers. So, that's kinda exciting. But we need to record these efforts. And if we can do that, we can actually come up with a discount. I think we should have a goal of like five percent. And what I've done, we turned this, the two pages into the vitality report. There's this page that I wanna spend a little time on. It talks about the Karnes County and Humana vitality program. And how do we accomplish this goal? Okay? How are we gonna get people engaged? We did the health, health biometric screenings where we had forty-one people show up, but we need to do more, because we have to make sure that they register and take the vitality questionnaire that is a web-based program. And that's kind of challenging, but I think we can do it with Vi's help, Christie's help, is having people sit there, we'll walk them through the program on the computer, and get them engaged. The thing about being a silver status is because we need people to become silver status. And what does that mean? They need to have at least five thousand points. Now, they received two thousand points because of the biometric screening. I think we should make a target to those forty employees that participated. And if we can target those, because they already have a willingness to participate somewhat, we just have to get them engaged. And I just wanted to let you know that we're gonna be making efforts with Vi to communicate how to get to silver status. Make it a goal to see if we can't get forty or more to get to a five percent discount. Because a five percent discount means about thirty thousand dollars or more to the county, because our employee count continues to rise. And five percent with premiums, the way we're paying premiums these days is substantial. So, I kinda just wanted to kinda talk about those processes that we need to go through, talk about some of the things, some of the good things that have happened, answering questions y'all may have. This is a good snapshot of gaining points through vitality. And it talks about what you can do as far as each accomplished goal gets you points. And now, I will say something about the points. The points are earned and can be used for purchases, movie tickets, kinda like cellular points can be used to purchase items, teak televisions, hotel stays. It's like a huge catalog of where you can use these points when you acquire them. Also, if we can just get people to take the health assessment, one thing that I really like is Humana made an agreement with Walmart, and for purchasing healthy foods, you can receive a five percent discount, which I think is substantial. And one more reason just why they should get engaged, I have a little piece in the back on the vitality regarding, you do have to request a vitality, healthy food card, and you do that online. So, I think to encourage employees, we can talk about the five percent discount, we can talk about the points, and try to motivate the employees and get to that, you know, forty or more people that we need to get the discount for the renewal. And in the process, we're gonna hopefully encourage people to be healthier, be more productive. It's a win-win to getting engaged in this. And I'd like to see the effort so far that y'all are making.
You just go to this humanitvitality.com, and you can register for this five percent card?
Yes.
And what is the prerequisite for that? Just having a Humana card?
Just having, you'll have a separate card, which is called the vitality, healthy food card. And you get it online. But I think if we put out all these good things that this will do for you, it'll be easier to get people to participate.
Well, then, one of the things Shelby, in here, we can get points for learning CPR and first aid. And I think that was something you had talked about wanting to do. You can earn, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty points with your CPR or first aid certificate. And you talked about possibly doing that with all the employees.
It's a great program. Humana's spent a lot of money when they purchased this company. They actually purchased it in South Africa, brought it over, and now they're implementing things. Normally, it's so nice now that they're giving premium discounts, because before, it was just giving points to the employee members, which was helpful. But it really, rubber meets the rug when you can offer substantial discounts to the employer, in this case, the county. And like I said, helping people become healthier and more productive is such a great thing. So, I'm committed to the cause to help you guys to where you need to be on the silver level. Christie is kind of our advocate on this account to also help. And I think that we have really, and Vi may attest to this, we've increased our involvement in a big way here, and we wanna hope to continue to keep you guys happy, because that's our goal.
Thank you, Judge.
You're very welcome. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
All the time, y'all. As soon as it starts, about a week.
No.
Come, big boy, do the ...
Okay. Now, go back. Is that all you had to do, Jules?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if you actually have something you need to go do, you might have a feeling ...
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Judge.
Have a good one.
Drive safe.
Thank you.
Number sixteen is to review the list of bond approvals for the following elected officials, Page 121312, Barbara Nigra Shaw, County Judge, Trail Street County Clerk, Denise Rodriguez, District Clerk, Captain Stewart, JP-1, Caroline Sorezecua, JP-2, Daisy Villanueva, JP-3, Vaughn Malone, Treasurer, and the list of bond approvals for county officials, Page 1813, Shelby Duke, Nick Commissioner, P.E. Allo, Commissioner, James Rosales, Commissioner, and Tracy Schindler, Commissioner. And that's the one that Luanne and Herb did ask me how, and he wasn't on here.
He was previously approved in a December meeting, which I don't understand why these other December, these other December ones weren't listed on the December agenda. There were specifics listed on the agenda, but we also paid things in December that weren't listed.
Okay. Number seventeen is to discuss approve/disapprove the Prison Rape Elimination Act of the Pre-year Stand for Amendment for the Karnes Civil Detention Center. It's a modification without any financial impact to the government and to the company. That's Diane Kaplan. That's a GO amendment. And I just need a, we just need to execute it to get it back to him.
I'm making a motion to approve the P.R.E.D.A. Amendment to the Karnes County Civil Detention and Modification Without Financial Impact and above the statute of the company.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Mad motion carries five zero. Shelby, we have ... Number eighteen is to select Commissioners and Committee Members for Road and Bridge Project and for EMS Project, and that's Pete.
All right, we hired Lorraine Day to interview departments and plan what needs are for the county for EMS and for Road and Bridge. And my suggestion is that two Commissioners, we can't have all five on the table, but two be on each of these, one for Road and Bridge and one for EMS, you know, two bridges. So, I would ask that Commissioners who wanna be on one or the other, speak up. I'll be on either one, doesn't matter. If you wanna have any preference.
I'll head for the Road here.
That makes sense.
James, you want the Road and Bridge?
I'll go with EMS. It don't matter, Road and Bridge, I mean, I'm fine with either one. Don't matter with me. I don't know a lot about Road and Bridge, I learned something about EMS. I'll go with EMS.
James, James and Shelby, and then Tracy and Pete. It says selective, and it can be an actual item. Y'all wanna agree, you can.
You wanna do it? To make sure?
It says selective, you have the ability to make that ... It's you, it's you, it's James, it's Shelby, it's Tracy.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
The members that ...
Second is Tracy.
That's second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number nineteen on the agenda is to discuss approve/disapprove Karnes County Community Plan as dated 2013 to 2015 as current plan, and that is Niva. That is, you have a package in your, a package, you have a, this is your package, it's the Karnes County Community Plan, 2013 to 2015. Niva's gotta keep this plan updated to get grants. Pretty much what it is, it tells you what's going on in the county, keep them out at best. But when she applies for grants, she has to have this plan ready.
I wanna say one thing about this plan. How many of y'all looked at it? There's a lot of concerns. I know the plan's got some data back to 2008, but there's a lot of issues there, what's been going on in our country and everything else, just some issues that affect mental health, and also services that the sheriff's gonna be needing and stuff like that. And I think we need to keep that back in our minds and stuff as we go forward, and we're gonna need to possibly come up with funding for some of these issues. We have a budget time coming up.
This also is required with a lot of applications through ACOG for not only juvenile, but Sheriff's Department, emergency management.
There are some issues in there that affect the county, that will affect the county in the future. And if we're gonna go forward and plan for the betterment of our citizens of the county, we need to be looking at some of these things, assisting the people that put this plan together and maybe access the extra funds somewhere, buy grants or maybe buy services. Academy, they're having to help support some of these.
I think if anybody actually sat here and read through this, they'd realize we need services for our children. We have nothing for our children to do. We need a place for them to go, other than something. We talk, we see a lot about drug usage, smoking. They need a, our children here need an outlet to go somewhere and be able to do something. We don't have any type of anything recreational. There's nothing for our children. I think that would bring down a lot of problems that our kids struggle with.
There's issues here, and everybody's always said there's, you know, juveniles, juveniles, juveniles. Well, if you read that plan, there's issues in there that affect the psychological aspect of it, that it turns around and brings them to being, have to be handled by the law, turns around, then have to go through the court system. There are some kids in there, it referenced several kids, it gives an amount that had contemplated suicide. More than I'm concerned, one person is more than what you, that's acceptable, there's nothing acceptable about that. And there's increased marijuana use, increase of alcohol use in there among the peers and among some of the families. So, I mean, it's, it's a business problem. And so much, we're gonna have to assist somehow, somebody, some way to, never gonna fix it, but you need to help to limit the exposure.
I agree, Shelby. We've got really good kids in this county. Sometimes you just need to point in the right direction, but they're good kids.
One thing, we had San Diego River, people created a support program for community development. They were asking if we needed anything for youth development, like for lighting for fields, or for basketball, tennis courts, or some activities for youth to have support programs for that, so that you guys, if you had any ideas, if some community wants to develop something, we'd get to San Diego.
We were thought of.
You see, Ford's was at that really neat skate park. Those kids are just all out there, they're just pretty similar, they're everywhere. But anyway.
I'm making a motion to approve the Karnes County Community Plan for date 2013 through 2015 as current plan.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number twenty is to discuss approve/disapprove speed limit on county roads, it's thirty miles per hour, and that's Jeff. Hey, Jeff.
Yeah, we'll do that. He's all, he's a light up this one, and he's a right next to us, my place, and we get numerous calls, we get more calls online. That come into our office, about all companies speeding, excess speed up and down the roads and stuff. And the known speed limit on county roads is thirty-five miles an hour in the state of Texas, all county roads. And what we're gonna start doing is to help out the Sheriff's Department, and they, and DPS, we have to post these roads to slow them down. And when you look at this, they're involved with the school buses, the school buses are having problems. They go around, school buses up and down the county roads. I want the right to have, put those stop signs up there where we feel, Road and Bridge feels they need to be, and for, for our kids and the school bus drivers, because we need to slow this traffic down.
Can I ask you a question, Jeff? Now, I know, I know what you're talking about, because I remember, it was like a year ago, Ross had come in and he had talked to us, and I remember this, about, and it might have just been me and you, Jeff, about anytime you're going to go below thirty-five mile, the speed limit on a road is deemed thirty-five miles per hour in the state of Texas.
Yes, ma'am.
If you're going to go below thirty-five, you have to post it to enforce it.
Yes.
So it's not that we're, that we're mocking anybody or roads, it's for you and for the sheriff, to be able to enforce that thirty mile per hour speed limit, you must post it, or it's an assumed thirty-five. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't they trying to change it, like on County Road one sixty, they tried to change, some guy tried to kind of get the speed limit changed or something, and Vols was going to do something?
But that wasn't, right, right. That was Mr. Jeff, by.
Okay, is that different?
And what ended up happening is nothing ever happened. So we contacted Ross, and Ross, thank God for Ross Fisher, he said that we could post these signs, and if we passed it through Commissioners' Court and gave Jeff the authority to post the sign, and this was back prior to Mr. Hancock getting here, it was like in November, when we brought the phone with him, and I know I just gave, I gave, I gave Jeff Ross's phone number for them, yes, and they were pulling up statute, and I said, "Talk to him, and y'all talk together versus me being in the middle and translating what Vols is saying."
What I, what I need to do is get y'all's permission to do what we need to do out there in the public, to slow down.
To post the signs.
Post the signs and put stop signs where they belong, and need to, because every intersection, there's some intersections, like you take three twenty-six that runs from here down here all the way, all the roads that intercept that, that county road needs stop signs on it, those people need to stop and let the main road keep flowing, it's just like a big highway. And with a lot of places, we don't have it. And where there are school buses, I'm having a gentleman that'll be here just in a while, is bringing us a check to put a school bus stop on a county road in, down in Mountain Creek, and that is our place, we're having a lot of problem with down there, and we are actually going to pave a section of that road and pave the school bus stop where the parents are going to be able to bring their kids there and park and wait for the school bus. But I need a stop sign there, and we keep putting it there, and some farmer comes over there with a tractor and pulls it out.
Seem at all?
Yeah, seem at all.
And I think, too, what had happened is, when he did put these signs up, some of the trucks were ticking, and they went through and found out that we had not passed through through Commissioners' Court, and we had talked about it, but we had done nothing. And that's when we got Vols on board to help him to figure out how to fix it, and this was the way for us to come to court. Jeff, we just, if we've been, we haven't had time to get it done.
In other words, you want us to let you, allow you to go ahead and put these stop signs where you think they most needed?
Where we need the school bus signs for unloading and loading kids, and stop signs and the speed limit.
And how do you make these determinations? Because I'm sure somebody's going to have that.
Depending on the amount of traffic that is down that road, like you take your three twenty-six, your county road, two thirty, I can just go and, and name your, a bunch of roads that are...
You're talking about the bus drivers, because they're probably the ones that are going to be...
That is our biggest concern, yes, sir.
Because they're probably going to be the ones that are going to be able to tell you they're, they're most like busy areas.
I would think you talk to the school superintendents, they'll, that these folks are concerned.
Exactly, and then get to them, because they're going to know where it's most dangerous now.
When you have a list from every school district, where the school buses are running, and we know basically where the school buses are running, so that is the roads that we're concerned with, and is right now, that's the roads we're also trying to keep up and working so the school buses can travel back and forth better also.
Mr. Hancock, can I ask you a question on this one? Because we're talking about stop signs, too. Can we amend, just to say to discuss approve, the placement of stop signs and speed limit signs on county roads? I mean, would it be okay to amend that to include stop signs, or would that need to be another agenda item?
I'd prefer it be another agenda item.
Okay. Well, he was asking about stop signs, and I don't want to...
Just to be on the safe side, let's do it on another agenda.
I'll also include a school bus stop.
I missed that, I'm sorry, I was asking.
The school bus loading and unloading signs.
Oh, you want those, too?
Yeah, I'll put that on there, too, on the agenda, then for next time. Yes, we have, we put a bunch of them out, and they just approved for us.
Well, didn't the state pass, wasn't there something about legislature last year, said by a certain time, I think September last, this last year, you had proper signs have to be placed on all county roads?
Yes, sir. And also, the signs, the old style signs that we've been buying are going to be phased out within, within five years. We have to use text, text type signs that glow at night, and if the sign gets, if the sign gets to a certain point where it loses its glow, that sign has to be replaced, and we also have to start inspecting all our signs up and down the road that's coming through. So it's just more work.
But Jeff, don't you have a lot of these road signs out that are twenty-five miles per hour?
Yes, we do.
Other than this thirty?
And that was some, some of the hall companies asked us to put out the slower signs, they asking us to, for their employees to slow it down. But I think what we'll do, we'll try to keep everything at, at that speed limit exception, like you coming into some communities, we'll slow the speed limits down, I want to drop the speed limit down, say like for the two thirty, where the people that in San Antonio live right there, maybe drop it down to fifteen, just for a little section where all the houses are, because one of the, one of the people there had a rock that was from a truck come off the county road and went through their glass window in the house.
I know we got this one, though, but you get with Mr. Hancock to discuss the twenty-five mile per hour and to discuss the, because there is something in statute, because we can't, there's a minimum, that's right.
Yes, yes.
And the only one that, that we're going to be able to enforce today, or that the sheriff is going to be able to enforce, is going to be...
It's just thirty miles an hour.
That's right. So the twenty-five might be a deterrent, but you can enforce it.
I think we have to, I have to make a list of those roads, the ones that we will do, because I was going to ask you on that one, I think, I mentioned it to you, and I think he said we have to list those roads.
Will you get with Mr. Hancock and look up that statute and see how low you can go for them on all those speeds?
Yes.
And, because I always had a question for...
What about the oil field traffic signs? Is that something that...
Oil field puts them up on their own, that's, that's...
They do it on their own, we do?
Yes, no, no, they put those signs out on their own, and if the oil field people catch those, their people or their contractors exceeding that speed limit, what they post, that company is fired, or their driver will run.
If they're caught.
If they're caught, exactly.
Like even those ones at Supreme, text stop, it was text stop that put those out, Supreme paid to put those out.
Yeah, because we can have some that, they're sitting next to the fence line, somebody can pull it up.
You go down here on one sixty-five, with signs, and we can put them up there, the hall company put them up.
All right, so we're on the thirty, we'll do the thirty, and you'll get with Mr. Hancock on everything else you need, and you'll help us with that.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve speed limit, county roads, thirty miles per hour.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Number twenty-one is update on severance tax collected by Karnes County fiscal years two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. I wanted to share this with y'all, because it's all goes back to the lobbyist deal. It's going to be like this page right here, and it's going to show you, it's going to give you a breakdown of how much Karnes has paid. And if you look at these figures, you'll see where the national gas production tax that, that was due, the natural gas production tax, with all the severance tax and the oil field related activity, it's called the natural gas production tax. And that's just for clarification of what we're talking about. From March two thousand twelve to August two thousand twelve, that was six months, Karnes paid in forty-five million, sixty-three thousand, ninety-two dollars. And then for the figures of September twelve to December twelve, which is the last four months of the year, and always remember, kind of as we get towards Christmas, they start shutting down a lot, because everybody gets to go home, we paid in thirty-two million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollars, which means we paid over seventy-eight...
Million.
We paid over seventy-eight million dollars in severance tax to the government in ten months. This is the money that we're lobbying back for, and that we're asking back for. And I didn't, I, I wanted you guys to be aware of that, I wanted you to know how much we paid, because that's something that we get from the controller, and we want to share with you, you can give that to Cheryl, and she can keep that. Those are big numbers. If you want to see what the other counties pay, all of the fourteen in the Eagle Ford are in there, you're more than welcome to view it. There are a couple of counties ahead of us, but not by a lot.
And that's not actually money, it's the county pays, that's paid from county production, production within the county.
Yes. It still comes, it comes from, it comes from Karnes County.
Right, but it's not money that we pay.
That's right, it comes straight from home. It doesn't come from our government, but it comes from out of our county, into Austin's pocket. Number twenty-two is an update on the interlocal agreement with the lobbyist with DeWitt County, Steve Holzhouser, and I put that on there. I wanted to share with you an email that he wrote regarding the Eagle Ford transportation update, which points out to you everything that he's done for Karnes County and the other counties that are in this agreement, and I'll update you on that, too. There are now, I think that I had put on the agenda in anticipation of twenty-two five to forty-five thousand dollars, because we didn't know how many people were going to join us. I'm happy to report back to y'all, that fee is eighteen thousand dollars, is what it's going to end up costing Karnes. We went actually below it, because Judge Byrd and Judge Till approved the same interlocal agreement on Monday that we approved prior to. I need to get with Judge Fowler, I believe since we all approved it in January, our part would just be, you know, a fifth of the eighteen thousand for January, which would bring our cost way down from what we anticipated, because I think we're going to pay on a month by month basis, is what the interlocal says, and I'm waiting for Judge Fowler to send me his copy back. But with the Ethics Commission, Mr. Holzhouser has made it extremely clear that it's Karnes, DeWitt, McMullin, Live Oak, and Gonzalez that he's representing. All five counties are listed, and that will keep us out of a bracketing problem with the legislature. And y'all all know how that works, because we're such a small county, a lot of times a big county gets stuff we won't get it, because it will say counties featured to this. So we're not going to get bracketed out of anything. That's what we were trying to do with the Ethics Commission, okay?
So will you get me a copy of that interlocal, so I've got the exact dollars and the payment for Karnes?
I'm going to get it to you as soon as Fowler sends it back to me, the exact counties listed, so we'll know how much our share is, because now we're in the five. And I'm hoping everybody's going to pay for the whole month of January. But since I haven't looked at it, I don't want to tell you that.
Who were the five counties?
Gonzalez, Karnes, DeWitt, Live Oak, and McMullin. This is going to break down the eighty-third legislature of damage being done to the roads, and what we've done so far, what he's done for us, Speaker Strauss's transportation, Zeke Raina, that's the one that Pete and I had gone to meet with in October of last year, they're, they're back during the legislative session, trying to get us, trying to get us what they can. Representative Goine, he's on, Senator Hager's really working on this for us, the Eagle Ford Sheriff Stakeholders Meeting, Tim Kleinschmidt, staff, Chief of Staff, John Higgins, I did receive a phone call from Mr. Higgins the day before yesterday, I'm going to say, somewhere in there, and he did come visit last week, which I was gone, so we, we missed the path, but I'll be seeing him in Austin. And Tim Kleinschmidt has been really strong about being down here, coming down here, and he's done text stop tours, he's, I'm in contact with that office a lot, they're doing all they can to represent Karnes County, and Mr. Kleinschmidt's taking this road thing very serious, he understands what's going on, and to, I have to applaud the ones that do the road tours, because getting them down here is not an easy thing to do, and he's been down here quite a few times, so I appreciate that. He has on here, on the twenty-eighth, he's going to meet with Blaine Burson, that's Lieutenant Governor's Chief of Staff, he was going to meet with Michael Dole, which was Senator Zaffari's aide, I know they met, I don't know what came out of the meeting, I talked to a couple of people that were in it, but I was waiting for the formal report before I say anything, because I'd rather y'all see the formal report than if I, than what I say. I don't like to put words in other people's mouth, that's not going to, so, a meeting on the twenty-ninth with Representative Darby, and they, they did form a caucus, and I was hoping that caucus would grow, and then I found out there was a five hundred membership fee to it, so I'm thinking it might not grow as like I wanted it to grow. And then on the February eighth, they met with Ken Armbristers, and that's the same one that Pete and I had also met with that day, and the infrastructure, the damage, everything, we are taking that and pushing it up the hill as much as we can, getting to Austin is one of the hardest things to do, and you guys all know that, you try it yourselves and your associations, and going through and doing your thing. But that's our update with the lobbyist and how that's going on. And I know you did ask me about interviewing the lobbyist, I have a deal that I, and I didn't print it, I meant to bring it with me, of all the questions that we looked through when we were interviewing all the lobbyists, and I do want to give you that, because you want to use it in the future, it was something that Tac had made, or somebody had made, and I want to share that with you, I want to give you a copy, because you had asked me and I have it. But I do have on email, I found it, I asked Fowler to send me that deal we used, so I have it. Okay? You want to give this to Cheryl, the update? And then number twenty-three is to discuss approve, disapprove a drop box for John Dear Parks, that's Jeff.
It's in, in the county yard there, y'all seen the little building that's there right now, it's a, it's a caterpillar drop off, and a caterpillar comes in there every day, drops parts off. If we order anything, we receive our parts, that's no cost to have them delivered, as they say, just courtesy San Antonio. This John Dear drop box will be the same, same deal for us, we'll get, if we order any parts or anything, if that makes anything, they'll deliver them like that, I don't have to drive it, or either one of my people have to drive to San Antonio to get them, we'll have the same agreements with, with those, they'll supply the, you know, the live building and all that on the building and everything, so it'll basically be the same thing like on the machine.
Is that ever been involved with previous drop locations?
I think so, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Motion carries five zero. Number twenty-four is to discuss approve, disapprove the purchase of a Ford F-150 two thousand thirteen, permit office for the price of seventeen thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars, and that's Tracy. Go ahead, Tracy.
This is the amount that Mr. Beaufort got us a deal with the government price on a pickup for our man that goes around and checks out permits, and he'll make that much money up in one week, and driving around, and the truck that he has is kind of old, it's got a lot of miles on it, so we need to, we got this approved last time, and if we didn't put the price up there, all we need to do is approve the money for the truck.
This is in the budget, not through the budget?
I'll amend it down on twenty-six.
Yeah, I have it in there.
I'll have to amend it down next year.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the purchase of Ford F-150 two thousand thirteen model for the permit office for the price of seventeen thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars, and that's Tracy. Go ahead, Tracy.
This is the amount that Mr. Beaufort got us a deal with the government price on a pickup for our man that goes around and checks out permits, and he'll make that much money up in one week, and driving around, and the truck that he has is kind of old, it's got a lot of miles on it, so we need to, we got this approved last time, and if we didn't put the price up there, all we need to do is approve the money for the truck.
This is in the budget, not through the budget?
I'll amend it, which is down on twenty-six.
Yeah, I have it in there.
I'll have to amend it down next year.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the purchase of Ford F-150 two thousand thirteen model for the permit office for the price of seventeen thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Number twenty-five is discuss approve, disapprove amending the budget in amount of eleven forty-three fifty-two to pay ACOG to assist the training for nine eleven special projects, and that's Tracy.
Yes, this fellow came down from ACOG and helped out training Brenda for the nine-one-one addressing, and we just now got this put on there, we should have had it on the last time.
I approved the training, but I didn't approve the money.
Right. We just need to approve the, approve the man.
I'll make a motion to amend the budget in amount of eleven forty-three dollars, two cents to pay ACOG for assist training on nine eleven special projects.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries five zero. Number twenty-six is to discuss approve, disapprove payment for the F-150 two thousand, Number 26 is to discuss approve/disapprove payment for the F-150 2013 F-150 for permit fees collected or amended, or amendment of budget, whichever is necessary.
Even though it's, but it's permit fees collected that are available. It's not budgeted, so we still need to amend.
We need to amend it to come out.
So all we need to do is amend.
And we can legally amend it, right? I'll make the motion to amend it.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 27 is to discuss approve/disapprove appointing Alfred Cavill, retired Constitutional County Judge and citizen of Karnes County to act, Judge Barbara Navarishaw in docket call criminal hearings and probate hearings in her absence as needed on court dates only, and that's judicial duties only. I put that on there. That's the same deal I had with Judge Cavill last year if I'm ever not available. And I need a judge. The only way I'm going to be able to get one is Judge Cavill.
Is that a no charge?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve appointing Alfred Cavill, retired Constitutional County Judge and citizen of Karnes County to act for Judge Barbara Navarishaw in the docket. Call of criminal hearings and probate hearings in her absence.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 28 on the agenda is a discuss approve/disapprove a resolution concerning high-stakes standardized testing of Texas public school students, Karnes County officials.
Judge Shaw, I have a message. Ms. Lynn called, she's the lieutenant at Carnes City, and said that she'd been trying to call your office and didn't get any answer this morning. She's not available this morning. She's home sick. She said if you are not comfortable passing the resolution without her being here and being able to ask for questions, to please pass and put it on a future agenda.
I looked at it, and I don't think that there's like a lot of questions to ask. I think it was just asking.
Push support.
Uh huh. It's just a support. It's a resolution of support. I don't think we need anybody to answer any questions. And I read it, yes, sir. And I printed one for each school to take it to a meeting. So I'm going to pass those around with these blue pens.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution concerning high stakes standardizing testing of Texas public schools.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. This white copy is Carol's, and the yellow copy is. We're going to be pressed a lot of signatures. If y'all want to start down there and share your staff. Number 28 is to discuss approve/disapprove signing a list of county surplus from property from 115. What did I do here?
Number 29.
Number 29, yes. And I want to thank Vi for doing this because that is, that's not, that was not a fun job, and that was not a pretty job, and that was a lot of work.
The only thing is, there's a couple of things after I gave you this list that I had some officials to come in and ask for these items. So I need to take them off the list before they're approved. Out of the old ag building or the trailer, the three filing cabinets need to be removed.
All right.
The, in the driver's license office, the three filing cabinets need to be removed.
All right.
Out of the county clerk office, the three filing cabinets need to be removed.
Oh, okay. Three large filing cabinets, that one?
Yeah, three large ones. Out of the third floor hallway, I have one desk from Commissioners Court. I'm assuming that's the, the, uh, desk that was in the old Commissioners Court upstairs.
I think it was that one that used to sit there that held paper and pens, and it was not.
Silence sheet. Do we still want that one? Is that okay?
If somebody wants it, they can have it.
No, nobody's wanted. I, I put it down. I thought, well, maybe we should keep it for, no, okay.
And actually, this is not moving anywhere. We're taking the table.
Okay, that'll stay then. Off of the county attorney, there were three desks. Those need to go down to two desks instead of three. And then on, in the extension office, my office has confiscated the letter folder because that is a wonderful device that I didn't even know existed. So Julie can, she puts like the stuffs from the direct deposits. She just puts them there that follows them correctly, and we can just mail them. So we're going to put that into my office. Other than that, everything needs to stay.
Okay, did, Carol, did you capture all the changes that she was going through?
I will.
Vi, at one time, a discussion has been made about the benches from the courtroom, and I see you have them listed on here.
Yes.
Have you cleared that with the Districtal Commission that those can be sold?
The five benches from the courtroom?
Right.
And the, that of the ag building?
Right, because they used to be in the hallway.
Right. She didn't want those. She kept the ones that were in the courtroom itself. And I don't think I listed those, did I? Just making sure. Yeah, those were the, in, because I talked to Sue Butler and to, and she talked to.
Since it said from courtroom, I was concerned.
Yeah, but they went out of the, they were out of the courtroom. They're stored in that ag building.
Surplus county property, 115 Market, Karnes County. The list is amended, James.
There you go. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries five zero. Number 22. Number 30 is to discuss approve/disapprove setting date for surplus sale. That's you, Vi.
We have to have at least two weeks of, or three, two weeks to advertise everything. I'm working also with Jeffrey and Sheriff Luanne Aueva on things that they did not have time to get listed. So we have till, where are we going to go? Till the first part of March to get everything out of there.
Be fine.
And everything, so either the first or second weekend of March, preferably not the first weekend of March. My son.
It's okay.
So I'm going to not be around.
That's fine. You won't have to. You can go with your son.
So that's like the weekend of March would be better for me?
We'll work with you, Vi. What you got to do, you just need to give us a date. You want second weekend of March? We got it.
I'm sorry.
You're not, don't be.
And I'm, I'm working with an auctioneer to try to have an auction item that will actually do the auctioneering for us. And I think that'll be a plus for us to get more, more out of this surplus equipment. So I think that, that'll help us, too.
Okay, so what, I want to know what that date is actually. March, March night? We'll probably do Friday preview like we did the last one for people to come in and look at the items. We also need to kind of figure out, so we're going to do it at the courthouse. And Jeff and I kind of talked about this already, grouping everything together. So we may need a little extra hands.
So we're going to do a preview March day?
Preview March day, yeah.
Everybody okay by that?
But I'll get Jeff on that, and I think Duane might even have some trustees that maybe we can help.
Just let me know when you have this stuff ready. We'll stick it on the internet.
Okay.
You're good. All right. All we need to motion is.
You want to see it from March night?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion. We approve setting date for surplus sale on March night, 2013.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 31 is discuss approve/disapprove advertising of surplus material in sale. That's fine.
I guess I put that on there, too. So for Luanne, normally is the one that does the surplus on there. But I also want to give a little time to the Sheriff's Department to come in with their list. I don't, because I think there's some, there's some seized vehicles that he could possibly go at that same time. Because I think when he did his surplus in December, Sheriff Gelof, that it was just like trucks or something. I don't think it was a seized vehicle, and I think Jeff's got some.
Yes, we got some equipment also. Also, there's, I'm going to get it up to you. And what we can do is take pictures of some of the items that we have. And actually, we can take and put them on auction dot zip.
Okay.
And it's free advertising for our auction. We can put it on there, and you can actually run the items on there. And if we do need an auction number to, to put this on the internet and advertise our equipment on there, we, because you'll get abundance more buyers, buyers to your auction by, you know, going wide with it. I will get a number for us, so we'll be able to run it and advertise a little bit.
I'll make a motion to approve advertising of surplus material in sale.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Vi.
So none. Motion carries five zero.
We're going to need additional items clarified by the 12th.
Well, the next meeting in February, yeah.
Sheriff, you have the seized cars?
The two vehicles that they had, the two chief of.
Yeah, well, there were some seized vehicles and whatever stuff that you can sell. At the first meeting in February, we need to put it on the list, surplus for them to approve, and then we can get posters made and advertising, whatever we need to do. So I think if we have vehicles and equipment, we'll have more of a turnout. Because basically, you can see what the surplus is out of the courthouse.
That's good.
So then you'll need that information the week before to be able to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, so if y'all get it to me the week before, because it needs to be posted on the agenda.
Okay.
So by February 5th?
By the 5th of February.
Remember, that agenda's got to be posted by the 9th, or it's going to be posted that Friday.
Yeah, well, they, they get it to me by the 5th. Or maybe it's given to you.
Thank you, Vi. All right. Number 32 is discuss approve/disapprove allowing county employees to have Weight Watchers at work, participation fees deducted from their county budgets.
This again is part of the vitality program. We're trying to get Weight Watchers at work. And one of the deals, it's a 12-week program, but you have to pay upfront or payroll deductions. There's a couple of options, and we just want to put this on the option for them to do that if they, right now, we're working on a leader to come actually hold the meetings for. This is one of the options that Weight Watchers let us have.
All right. We just need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve allowing county employees to have Weight Watchers at work, participation fees deducted from their county budgets.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. Number 33 is to discuss approve/disapprove allowing county employees to only use the juvenile probation building at 115 Market Street for exercises classes as part of the county vitality program. Liability waivers will need to be signed by all participants, and that's fine.
Again, vitality program. David Zatella will be giving us zumba lessons, ready by its willing to participate. And would, I guess Herb and I will probably develop a waiver, eating the county harmless if somebody gets hurt, injured, or whatever.
Okay. When are y'all wanting to start these, Vi?
Um, I, Lisa said something about maybe the 11th of February, but if we need to wait and get the.
Can we do the move? We'll probably do the move in February.
Okay.
And start the 1st of March because with Commissioners Court, passing today's deal is deemed seven days' notice by law. We have to make seven days' notice by law of move over Commissioners Court. I'm going to have Herb, or ask Herb, please, to draw a legal posting of that seven days' notice that Commissioners Court has been moved to, to Tinmas Cowherd effective March 1st.
Effective March 1st. So you want us to wait until?
Well, and however, the stock show is going to happen from the 7th through the 24th. JD's going to be gone a lot, and so that last week is probably going to be the week. I want to give JD that courtesy to be able to have time to pack, or him and Megan, to be able to, I don't think they have a lot in there, and I don't think we have a lot. So I mean, it's not going to take a long time to do this. Shelby with the flatbed, Pete with the flatbed, for two trips and done.
Okay.
Because we're taking these chairs and that table over there.
Okay.
We're not taking this.
Okay.
Okay, and that belongs to juvenile probation.
Okay. So you want us to wait till March to start?
Can we start March 1st?
Yes, it'll be fine.
Can you just swap with me? That way, we're not, not coming in and out, and everybody's in here at once.
Okay, we can do that.
Can we do that?
Yes, no problem.
And then Herb, will you help us with the liability waiver for the employees that choose to participate in zumba?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need a document for use of building or?
A document.
Like an understatement, letter of understatement or something?
It's accountability. So, I think we're okay. And Mr. Hancock, when he draws that up, he's got that legal legal eye. He can put all that legal mumbo jumbo in there for us.
I understand.
Okay. That work? And you'll do that for us? Is that okay with you, Vi?
Yes. I just want to make sure we're protected and we're covered, and it's okay with everybody.
All right, we're good.
I'll make a motion to approve align county employees only to use a juvenile probation building at 115 Market Street for exercise classes and part of the county vitality program. Liability waivers will need to be signed by all.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
We're already getting healthy.
Hey, you need a 5% discount, we'll do it, too.
Exactly. That's why we're working on it.
All right, Vi, discuss approve/disapprove forming Sick Pool Policy Review Committee to update current policy, to include Brenda Yanisak, Homer Rios, Denise Rodriguez, Michelle Solia, Lyman, Sylvia Cortez, Daisy Luanne Aueva, and Lisa Luna.
Okay, on Denise, we actually need to change that to Mary Ann.
Okay.
Other than that, looks good. Basically, what it is, the policy we have now is extremely outdated, and we just need to get together to review it, and we'll get Mr. Hancock involved in that also. And also, we want to define what a critical illness or critical injury is. Some of them are no brainers.
Catastrophic.
Critical, I said critical.
Catastrophic illness or catastrophic injury is. Some of them, you know, cancer, heart attacks, those things are easy, but surgery, and then there's complications from the surgery. I've used everything. Can I apply for the Sick Pool, eligible for the Sick Pool? We just need some clarification that kind of helps us. And that's something that they will do. Of course, they will come back to Commissioners Court to approve everything.
All right. All we need to motion?
Motion to put it in.
Prove forming Sick Pool Policy Review Committee to update current policy. Brenda Yanisak, Homer Rios, the change from Denise Rodriguez to Mary Ann Zeramie, Michelle Solia, Lyman, Sylvia Cortez, Daisy Yanova, and Lisa Luna.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 36 to discuss approve/disapprove the formation of a salary committee for the review of county employees, elected official salaries. The proposed member or its followers, Tammy Broadway, Rachel Lucka, Dixie Moots, Denise Rodriguez, Luanne Casper, Carol Sneezy, Daisy Luanne Aueva, Russell Sneezy, Herb Hancock, Sylvia Cortez, Donald Hons, JD Fulgry, Helen Hernandez, and Vi Malone. The committee will make presentation to Commissioners Court during 2014 budget process, and that's fine.
Basically, what we're wanting to do is get everybody together, have everybody responsible for contacting their neighboring elected officials that are in the same position, get salaries amount, come in, talk about it. If we want to have another committee formed, where they're citizens, they're also part of the committee, or district league, elected officials.
That's a salary grievance committee. That's a different one.
Okay, so we.
That would be Carol, roll in the names.
Now, this was just, Mr. Chapman had asked me earlier when I come in if we were going to involve the citizens when it comes to salaries. Because basically, elected officials setting their own salaries doesn't look real well. But we're also setting the salaries of the employees. It's kind of the starting point. So come June 1st, we're going to hand this to you. This is what we want, and we're not waiting until September 30th to approve salaries.
I said, Shelby asked for surrounding counties, Judge Fowler, town court, Ms. Carol over there, they sent us, Rhea, Carrie Rhea, somebody sent the whole.
And we have some of those from his previous budget year also.
So we just need to approve the formation.
Right.
Also, when you do that, I think you all, the department heads and I, they need to create job descriptions.
Yes.
For everybody, and what they consider a clerk is in Carol's patient. She's got deputy clerks, you know, stuff like that. So, and then I talked with Duane about different certification levels and stuff like that. We need to be looking at all of it.
Yeah, and that's something that each department head, that's going to be their responsibility to bring it back to the table for us to all look at, look at the neighboring counties and see, and maybe we, we all come to the room where we don't need that salary survey then. I don't know.
Okay, that's good.
We've talked about it, that we've got to start somewhere.
All right.
Made approval.